It might be silly to call the meeting of the Found Public Schools Order for February 7th, 2023. Let's begin with the budget. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of public would like to make a comment for the recording of the meeting, please notify me by either in person or remote, and I will notify the public per the Massachusetts Public Meeting Laws, and please state your name for the matter. All right, so let's begin with our mission and vision. Would you mind if you do anything today?
How many public schools? The Found Public Schools creates low-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and transparency. Vision. Clippers are creative, positive, and engaged learners who participate in your community as thoughtfully responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you for that. So, you saved us.
What would make your school life better? Miles from Morse Pond School in grade five said recesses without other classes, and you can see more of your friends. We're often more receptive. Mason didn't list what school he was from, but he said a school life would be better if we could have more spaghetti. Can I just see if I can find about what's going on? That's not if it's what's good. No, the colors. Okay, yeah, here's. Aliyah from Morse Pond School in grade six said, what's going well in school is I like the new sore school rules. All of the classes are fun. I love library class because Mrs. Abbott is really nice and I like to read.
That was a good one that I don't want to say. And I know we've read all of them, which we've been. So moving on to public comment at this time. So, members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following committee's discussion on an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@foundith.h12.ma.us. Do we have any public comments? Okay, no one online. All right. So we will move along to the next item, which is student advisory, and it looks like we are.
Anna was not going to join us tonight.
Well, we were missed her because she always has some really good feedback, but hopefully have that at next meeting. So moving right along, we will act on the New York City Field Trip for May 12th, May 13th.
So I'm going to turn it over to Jay. Please share. Our awesome preschool teacher. Yep, so thank you for having me. Karen Adams and I were on the Dactyl Art Design. We have about 70 members this year because we started including ninth grade about three years ago. And then that brings up kids from Lawrence School who work with Karen Harris. So in any case, every year, oh gosh, for almost 20 years, I take the kids to New York in May. We leave here about 6:00 AM and we get there in kind of quick tail, depending on traffic. For this year's trip, we got one of those great Chelsea galleries. I don't give a big Chelsea galleries, but there's hundreds of them in one space. One space, we bring five classrooms, 48 students. And we go to the galleries and then we break for lunch and then we take them on the subway, which is a learning experience. And then we get them on the subway and teach them how to actually use a token and get through the thing that spins around and not talk to strangers. Yeah, right. Well, that's the car. So you have to help feed the car. And then we'll go to Times Square. We'll get off Times Square and walk over to MoMA. And then they'll see MoMA and then we'll be walking up to, after MoMA, we'll be walking up to Central Park, and then the bus will pick us up there, and then we'll stop at Socrates Park, which is in between Queens and Brooklyn, which is a sculpture park on the river. And they can take pictures. That way they can see Manhattan, you know, say you come this side, like, oh, look at it. And then this year, we're going to stop at the Bel Air Diner in Queens, which we've done before. We let them know ahead of time that we're coming and they plan for us and then come home around midnight. That's the plan. That's what we're going to do this year. You did this so much, but I remember you were here. I had all those details and it was fun. It's a great trip. I wouldn't do it if I didn't love to do it. And Melissa comes to Chaperone. And you might not remember, but last year you said, yes, next year I'll come to Chaperone.
That's what we said last. Eighth grader replied that my very own eighth grader has declared that she wants to be in Miss James' class because she has seen me go on your field trips, but she has been always art inspired by you, as we know. And just in real time, you know, selfish plug on that. So Kelly's making a motion to approve.
To approve the New York City Field Trip on May 12th.
No second? No. We are all still in person. So is there any other questions?
I'm noticing that I did put last year that they.
Where did you go last year?
Oh, yeah, maybe it's just a my itinerary, but.
So all in favor?
Aye.
So we're moving right along. The next thing on the agenda is to act on the FY24 School Order. And we've heard a lot about this. I threw all the steps in the process and. Hearing, so do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget fiscal year 2024, $56,175,780.
And is there a second?
A second?
And any further discussion or anything additional or that you've heard, I mean, you've been very thorough in being.
I'll just finish the last presentation that was at Northbound last week. And again, very supportive. Yeah, the budget, they asked really good questions. They were supportive of all the new positions over the next few years. We can make that happen. Support of the the safety monitors, because I always had asked that question at the end of discussions. So, okay, so we have finished all the schools.
So the ESTR funds have run out now. They're running. When will they run out?
We will probably have some ESTR dollars in the rolling in that year, forecasting the budget at this point, but that was not counted one.
That's what I was going to add, where they counted them, so.
And they're not a part of this budget anyway. That's beyond, beyond this, this salary.
That would, that would be just one curve ball that might, might have happened, but since you've included.
No, it's not included at all.
I, just with a public eye, you know, we answered this question, but I think it's important that, you know, we met with members of the INX Committee through the process, and then you will present the whole budget for them tomorrow night. Oh, and that's what my question is going to be. That has to happen after you guys vote, and they're reading tomorrow night, so.
Any further questions? Okay, here are none. We will, everybody who's in favor, please say aye. Thanks for everyone. I know that's a lot of hard work. Really appreciate all the effort we've invested in.
Alex made it through this first one.
Okay, and then. Thanks, here. We have the school choice seats, which you recently heard about in our hearing. So is there anything additional to add to it at this point, Joan?
We have a motion, make a motion to approve school choice seats for 23 to 25.
Is there any additional discussion, school choice seats? Okay, here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
May I oppose? Any of your sentences? Very unanimously. And we'll move right along to act on declaring some refrigerators as surplus.
Just that they have run their life there. Well past the age. We can't make this them any further. So we've had to replace and the company, the vendor, will take the refrigerators away when they install.
So we did replace them, huh? That's my.
We are. I don't think they're replaced yet.
But we're not like out of the fridge.
Oh, no, no, no. No, it's just that, like, they can't make this anymore, right? I mean, they're still running this minute, but they're, you know, I don't think they do, because we're waiting for your vote to make. Looking over at Sharon, because she knows where the refrigerator is somewhere.
Just so you know, we're unlucky.
Someone want to make a motion? That is surplus? And Carrie's a second on that. All those in favor? Any opposed? And so I will pass on our G-4.
This is a rubber. So I just, last week was No God Week. We had a lot of activities all week long at all of our schools. Some culminating activities on Friday, of course. Just want to make sure that, I think once again, Kavosa and Kaita Advocates that always support and they pay for the T-shirts. I also want to point out Willie Matthews was the one that did the design. Because the theme this year, it was, the theme was selected by a committee, which was new. Several, by all the past, or the previous winners. They've got this, the peer recognition. And so they picked the title, and then there were like 30 entries this year on the on the shirt, but Willie Matthews won. It's wonderful. It shows the kindness, which was the theme. I also want to just congratulations to all the students across the schools that were their peers that actually selected. You know, it's huge for a peer to, you know, to be honored by your peers and slotted by your peers, which I think is really special. And then at the high school and then at Lawrence, each team actually selects the teachers about them. The No God Award. So it's a special week, and we continue to talk about how to integrate this throughout the year. But the VIPS continues with the community award winners. They have always recognized an individual in the past, and this year Ariada Carrigan was. And it's an organization, and the organization was Kirkwood Coast. They had over 20 nominations. So this was a, a new. So the Kirkwood Coast actually came and played during the, they gave out the award. So the students at Lawrence, it was great. It was a lot of fun. Good week. I just wanted to share that. We have a little update on the tier focus monitoring. Joan tells where we are in the process.
Certainly. So with your focus monitoring, I know I reported out of where we were with, there's the coordinated, the old coordinated program, there's the two cycles, two three-year cycles now, so there's the group eight, and then the group A. So we have already, we have done a self-assessment, and we're following up with some of our corrective active and progress monitoring for group B. And so with that, we submitted our first progress report on January 20th. And that was under the earlier release for high school seniors, the bullying prevention plan, curriculum reviewing institutional self-evaluation. Those were all the civil rights component. So we're moving right along. Our next progress report, in which we will then do those same four categories, but also professional development for special education and student discipline. And that will all be in April. That will be submitted April 3rd, and then we will have another submission on June 19th, and that will close us out for our group B. And then simultaneously this year, we are also working on the group A, so it's our self-assessment phase. So that's the special education is again, civil rights. And so the special education piece of more of the student record review. So it's about, you know, the IEP process and from consent and from title sign all the way through eligibility and development of IEPs. And under the civil rights, it's about services, again, more civil rights and the services in the student. As I suppose we will be doing in that, we submit that in the spring, so I will be back again and do more updates. So we're, we're in good shape with all of that at the moment.
All right, thank you, Joan. Then right, I'm going to ask you to give us a few updates, please.
Your updates, okay. I will start off with a announcement that we have a professor from Cape Verde, Zeta Vera. She's going to be visiting our school system on April 3rd to 7th. This is important because we're establishing a sister school relationship with a school in Cape Verde. What's incredible, but Professor Zeta Vera is that she's a founder of the school. She's younger than me. She founded the school. She started school with 15 kids, and now it's 407, eight years. 400 kids to learn English. She has, she's doing a doctorate in Lisbon, but she's a professor in the, in the current city of Priya. She's a professor, she's a director. She's a student. She's all these things, and she's a great person to really get to know and to combine. She graduated from Bridgewater in 2013, which is good because Bridgewater has a 20-year relationship with schools in Cape Verde. And so they're bringing that partnership to help us in a partnership. So Angelo Barbarosa is the director of the Pedro Ayres Institute in, in Bridgewater. And so he's bringing his, his expertise and coming along there. And I think having that as well as a, a school system that's thriving learning English would be a fantastic way of getting our kids excited about their cultural background, because we have a, we have a rich community here of Cape Verde. But I think it's also important for all kids to see other schools. So I'm going to start doing Skype. I did this in another school. We did Skype, but now it's Zoom. And it's fantastic, because I think real education starts when you see with the rest of the world. Like in America, we're family. It's awesome to see a lot. We have a lot of stuff, but the rest of the world does not have this stuff. And having those connections, I think, will be a fantastic educational resource for us. So I'm excited about this, this project, and we've got a lot of support from the community as well. So back in around April 3rd to 6th, if you, if we can shoot you a little email and say, hey, this person, I'd love for you all to get to meet.
I've got a whole other pre-station on the 4th, on Tuesday the 4th.
Thank you. Okay, fantastic. Keep on going, or? So maybe you actually were experienced last Thursday. We had on Groundhog Day, February the 2nd, we had a family forum, beloved community forum. And it was, it was really good. I felt like we're taking steps with families saying, listen, we're doing the work of equity. And equity is not just a teacher job, not a student job. It's everyone has to be, to make sure that all our kids are, are thriving. And so we've had one September, and the one in February was really unique because we had stories from parents. And to hear some of the problems that parents had to go through in an April journey. And we, Amber Henry was a former student, fantastic storyteller. Shay Brown Curly was another one, fantastic. So we're really blessed to hear those stories. And then we had an opportunity to, to really dig deep. What does it mean to be belonging? What does that mean? What does school need to do to make sure that students, when they come here, they feel belong? You know, that's, that's something that I really want to make sure that the kids deal with. And then, and then the, the participants, somebody who were here, they broke it into groups and they started to brainstorm. What does it mean? What do we need to do as parents? What do we need to do as gardeners to make sure that our school is a place of belonging? And I think that's a fantastic task, and, and I hope to take those forums and say, all right, you guys are now teams. You guys, let's, as a team, what do we need to do? So I'm really looking forward to the progression of these forums. And I'd like to thank those who came, and I would love to see everyone there. We'll see what we can do further than that. So that's my second. My last one. Done. That's it. So my last one is this update of what we're doing, which is the Equity Audit. And Equity Audit is doing real well. I spent, in January, we were spending time on creating teams. And I'm hearing a lot of your recommendations to make sure that teams are diverse and they're broad. So each school will have an equity team. They'll be looking at their, their schools. In January, two, two staff members from the company, the audit company came over, and they were trying to look at what, trying to establish what's our focus? What do we really need to do? And so Dr. Williams and Jenny Bertolo, who was Skyping with us before, really helped us to find out what we want to do. We want to have a comprehensive, really dig dive, seeing what the problem is, or what, what are the blind spots that we have in our school? And we want to dig deep on that. And so they gave us criteria to look into. There's a lot of criteria, and we're going to do this in about three days. And phase one will be all school-wide survey, where there'll be discussion groups and trying to evaluate our schools. So we're going to be doing that for the entire school population. Then phase two, there'll be analysis from the company to try to see where we're, where we're at. And phase three will be a climate survey where students and parents will be discussing and trying to see where some blind spots are there. I, we're hoping for a June final report. And, and then, that my hope is that, because of the summer, I like to take a report, well, actually after you see it and stuff that. But then start planning for strategic planning for next year and jump off and say, okay, what were the issues we wanted to do, you know, whatever. So that's the hope. And, but it's been, it's been a good process to try and figure things out, and we're progressing. I had three things, so if that question for.
So I, when you're talking about the analyzing and looking at issues, issues that we have. Are they also going to look at strengths that we have? Because in all these discussions, I never heard that word yet. To me, the thing, the first two things we talked about tonight are strengths of our community. So I hope they're going to dive deep or deep dive, whatever that's where she is, and tell us our strengths to.
Absolutely. I should be doing that. I should be saying that. It's definitely from an asset kind of strategy, not, not deficit. So we want to make sure that things are doing well. We should be highlighting the other things that we shouldn't do, you know? That's, that's very good. I tell people that my parents look only at the lower grades. They never.
Blind, um, blind spots too, because even some of our assets can be blind spots. We're just so used to them being there that we don't even notice them. So, oh, gosh, congratulations. Oh, no. So one, I really enjoyed the forum, so thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to attend. And then about the equity audit, you mentioned parents and families and students and staff. But we have sort of a unique position, and there are a lot of, so is there going to be an opportunity for the school committee to also participate if you know, fit in one of those other camps?
Very good question.
It's part of the phase three.
Yeah, with the survey. I think, I think there'll be a time for that, but I'll make sure that, that you're included.
Because not everybody fits into one of the other categories.
So that was exactly my question, and I think it would be great to include the school committee as much as you can throughout the whole process. So that would be my advice on it.
The time. I'll make sure. No, that's very good.
My question, Bridgewater State has a sister school or?
Yeah, we do. No, no, no. Bridgewater State has a 20-year relationship with different organizations in Cape Verde. And so they, they have it, or, you know, they communicate with the, or university down there as well. So that's, that's what we have. Now, I would like, like, suppose that we do have a sister school. We, that we would have a close connection, yeah, students from here as well as there to Zoom and develop a relationship and, and have some interaction. So that's, that's my, that's my hope, and I'm true for that.
Last year, Henry, didn't the kids in their senior projects, wasn't one of the connection to the school in Brazil?
Yeah, they're.
Did that come with fruition?
No, that was, yeah, I think last year was kind of crazy. No, they, they, they came up to, I think the biggest problem was connection on the Brazilian side of it. They had problems trying to communicate with them, which is what I like about this is that when you have a sister, when any type of school, let's just, you have to have a strong relationship with, with both sides. And so having Bridgewater there is a powerful connector, but you want to have a relationship. So I would love to find something in Brazil that, we do Cape Verde, but, but, but yeah.
No, it's to get, this, it was a good idea, the student.
Yes.
That was, that was good.
It was disappointing. I'm just, I'm trying to even remember. There was a connection, but it was trying to get together with them. It was very difficult. And it's tough. It's, it's.
It's hard to hook up things on both sides.
Yes.
Like this is different continents, or, you know, between here and Europe, or between North and South America. There's technology too, there's lots of things, but.
There's still that, that's definitely my, my side.
Is this?
So a really great opportunity, incredible really, that the Openog Education Center is offering the educators in Manchester and Fama. It's a 10-week parental enrollment series for the, it's free of cost to all the educators. They were able to get this through the US Department of Education. U S Department of Education Grant, and the ten week series will have different presenters throughout, but. They'll cover topics about what the contemporary territory is, for the current. Their, their kinship and leadership from the sixteen hundreds, post-war through the eighteen hundreds, the history. The era of the boarding school and the education at that time. Just the, the cultural justice, the land suit, that they went through, the recognition from the federal. Government, the land trust, and then the constitution, the private constitution. The hunting and fishing, just cultural revitalization, and really their self-determination throughout, and so these are the areas. So it's just gonna be a really great opportunity, they have fifty seats on twenty five, we'll go to Farnum, twenty five in Mashpee. And so just really looking forward to, you know, to some of our educators being able to.
When will that take place?
Oh, thank you. No, I think it starts in February, doesn't it?
Now, just have one second, sorry.
Okay, so it's gonna be. Then registration in this week, it's gonna be on Mondays. Okay, fine, I'll get back on that, so it doesn't say it's our day.
Okay, but it's gonna be sometime, it sounds like this.
Yeah, definitely.
And how do people sign up?
So we are sending, it's, it's been sent out to all of our staff.
Okay, so they're only found in public schools, whereas any educator in primary.
From public schools.
Just.
Yeah, I mean, sorry, in Mashpee schools, so where they were, the, the teacher limited, obviously, but. Yeah, it's good, because it's part of that partnership that we've been developing, and the agreement that we have through that, but.
And that's also all grade levels then?
Uh huh, yeah, it's for everyone.
And is it just teachers, or is it all staff?
Any educator in the.
So now it's a board staff, just?
Yeah, not educators. It'd be a great opportunity for anyone that has, you know.
I have a, so my question was, when does it start, my question was, when will the teachers find out about it, when it sounds like you're studying, you know? But I also just wanna say, it sounds like an amazing opportunity, and I wish I could pop on the bus, because I love our partnership, I've been saying this for so long. I've been saying this, that I wish that, you know, as a child kid myself, that I wish that we had more. Just history of our neighbors and our, you know, the, the Wampanoag community. Growing up, I just, I, I wish I could pop in on this, I would clear my Monday evenings and do this if I could, but what an amazing opportunity for. Our public school teachers in these two districts, I'm so excited for them, I can't wait to hear all about it.
You know what, we'll, we'll monitor, cause it actually starts, I did want to just send an email, it's on March thirteenth.
Okay.
So registration starts Friday, can we just monitor the number of seats, and then I could always.
The great thing is that that all took them down to our students, so they'll be happy.
Yes.
Other questions?
Alright, just a quick safety update, all of our elementary schools have now done a shelter in place drill. We have more sponsored learn scheduled before the break, and then the high school will be scheduled, they went very well, I think the, the. The only challenge that we're, we're having is using the navigate, and it's just because you need more practice, you know, with the functions of it, and so. On the, the other side of it, the teachers are asking, can we do these once a month? And, you know, the quick drills, it goes, but it also gives them practice and more practice with the navigate side of it, so. So we are, we're, we're gonna try to see if we can fit those in and do that. I've already spoke about that, and I just want, but today, our nurses just made in a train, the train, Eric stopped, the relief. Frame, and Chris Cowan from Fire Rescue Pump Fire Rescue actually did the presentation. So now we're, we're working on a schedule for the nurses to be able to train others in the building. And I'll just, I'll just say, Joan's actually writing a grant. And hopefully we'll be successful, and if that's the case, we'll be able to have events.
John, question? Wouldn't stop when we return?
I was gonna ask a thing, so I really don't know what you said.
It's for more math, yeah, and it's, like, it's trying to get, it's, so, it's for.
It's like first aid.
It's, it's first aid, but when.
Thought that that's where they started doing it, was that right?
I, I don't know this.
I don't, I don't know what that's, it's like it's for.
That's where it started. So the trauma late.
Trauma. I have another question, so in the past, I've asked about students taking, getting CPR certified. Way back when we, Mr. Andrew used to CPR certify every fifth grader that came through, and I was wondering. Do we have any work, anything that works on something like that, that's more of like a. I love that we can stop a big trauma mode, but we're more likely to see something like a, a heart attack, unfortunately, or. Something more of like a basic life support kind of thing, or like a first aid kind of thing, so I was just wondering if we had any. Idea if we were gonna think about having something like that, or if we, I know that I asked about it pre-COVID, so I feel like. We should just start fresh, so I'm now officially asking, okay?
Okay, and so regarding registration, our first big week push was last week, we got eighty-nine registrants. And we have a, preschool numbers are rising, so we are opening up next week a. Fifth class for preschool, but it'll be half a day for school, and. And then there are a few announcements, CPAC meeting tomorrow night. The Chase Kindness Challenge Assembly, and the dates are there, I think we can make sure, actually, I think you have a flyer in your. In your packet, which is just a really special event. And then the soup for soul, and it's fine.
Oh, nice, you know, buy your soul, and have a whole a soup, and it goes toward our partner, the high school.
And they sell out a lot.
Get your tickets now.
So exciting, and the soup is delicious.
So I have a question about the flyer for the committee on registering, but we talked about. Just the, the requirements of. Proof of residency and some of the homelessness clauses, is there something that is going around that explains that? If you don't have these. I, I believe we talked, is that just me thinking, we talked about this, but I, I feel like we've had this conversation before, just making sure that. Everyone knows that if, you know, if you are in a situation where you're homeless, you still can register, and that you have a right to.
Absolutely, so I, I will double check, I believe that it's on the app, the kid, the kindergarten registration form, but. Everyone's going, they go to the buildings, and certainly everyone that is involved in registering is aware of that, but I will most. Quickly check on that, because I have on my soup tonight.
And, and these are translated, right, these flyers, okay, so, yeah, I think. I would feel our company was on the flyer, so people knew to come, even if they didn't have proof of residency. Cause I know that can be definitely a barrier for families.
Okay, on to routine business, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from January ten?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for January ten.
And a second? And we, edits changes, okay, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. And committee member reports.
I went to the L P A meeting, and it was great, with different tables set up. For stations for families for different aspects of learning about the school and resources, and. So that, that was great, I got to talk to some students who are mentoring. Supporting English learners with their schoolwork during the day during Clipper Center.
Thank you.
And when it's sort of a committee report, so now that he has asked for me to finalize the committee. To description, I don't know what it's called, the committee description thing, that's in the rule draft, that when new members start, they'll have a description of each committee. So we're missing, I think, one from Leah, one Melissa, and one Bill, and then it'll be a hundred percent complete, so if you need the link.
What are the committees, do you know what's gonna happen for the committees?
Oh, yeah, okay, calendar, committee, health and safety, and L P A. Oh wait, and school building needs. So it's just the meeting schedule and the purpose of the committee, just for those, everything else is done, we're supposed to do a description on each of those?
Yes. I think, just for the L P A, I think that should come from the school, cause that would be their description of what the L P A is.
I'm actually, you know, agree with that, right, because they're, you know, because they're the.
I would say just attend the meetings.
Yeah.
Yes.
Then they usually have the purpose of the committee, and then it says something like. The liaison shares information with the bachelor school, school base, blah, blah, blah. So, if you guys wanna send those, and then we. Wrap this up.
So if I, if I can check back, I can always, cause we, we actually have descriptions of the meetings, so.
Yeah, I just.
I'm sharing, if you're ready, alright.
Uh, cause we don't have the dates either, so we're, we're not very, I'm, I'm not very helpful.
And that's it. Off everyone's list, there, break up. Any other hands, I had just a reminder, I think almost everybody's gotten back to Natalie about the retreat, but we want to just. You haven't, please do that, and we'll get that agenda out ASAP, and I just wanted to. Mention a few people who are able to attend the legislative breakfast through the K P A collaborative. And, you know, they break out from groups, and it was one of those that I felt like, oh, I kind of wanted to be at all of them.
I want to be in the other ones.
And we were in transportation, one being all of them, which I had to say. But. All of the other issues were really. Exactly, but I do think that it's really interesting that they, you know, a little bit about what are the issues. Around transportation, and then hearing all the other details, it is much more complex than it seems, so. Thanks to everybody who makes that run as seamlessly as it does.
Alright, so that's my question, I, I wonder, and this is just kind of a bigger, if, if it's possible for them to change those times, cause for working. School committee meeting, or school committee members, it's impossible to attend those.
I only get there if I have the day off. And that, I've only done a few times.
Yeah, it's just, I, I, I think it's something that.
Can we get some of the feedback, I mean, the, the, try to, or I got something on Saturday, then I pick up.
And I very much enjoy being there, I just wanna say that, I.
And it's really helpful to everywhere, yeah.
Yeah.
Fear from everyone. I will say it's one of those that, being virtual, it was the best we can do, it is so much better in person, it's one of those. And I think we lose a lot from being virtual, not all the answer like that, but I think this one is.
And I do think, as you, as you saw when the superintendent introduced their school committee members. There, we had the greatest representation, and there were three of us, right? So, I mean, there's definitely. A missed opportunity for school committee members, because it's an impossible time to attend, like, because Margaret is retired, and I can take the day off. So, you know, it's definitely something worth remembering back.
I'll pass that one.
Thank you.
Okay, so if nothing else, let's hang on.
I just wanted to say that since last time I mentioned newspaper, I was quite pleased with the chair of the newspaper last week. So we are grateful for that.